I'm going to go ahead and open the planning commission meeting for October eleventh, two thousand and four. Are there any public comments not listed on the agenda this evening? Step forward, please. State your name and address.
Dan Berg, two oh one two two, South Malala Avenue, Oregon City. And I'd like to address the minor partition. As I understand it, a minor partition now involves you have to go through the same process as doing a subdivision. I have one of my neighbors that is elderly. She would like to sell off one of her lots in order to make a final vacation before she dies. And in order for her to sell off one of her lots, it's our understanding that she's got to go through the subdivision process. And it just seems like to me that's really a big burden for someone that only has enough room to cut off one lot.
Okay, so you're actually addressing something that's in the comprehensive plan?
No.
Well, I'm not sure what the issue is, but we're not changing the process. Partition is considered a type of subdivision, but it's still a much easier process than a standard subdivision. So I know maybe it's something you can come in and we can talk about during the office hours.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Is there anything else anyone wants to address that's not on the agenda this evening? Okay, I believe Commissioner Orson has a couple of announcements.
Again, I have a couple of announcements, some fun things. Phila Stocking, Phila Hart is going to be having their fall fundraiser and harvest dinner this Friday, October fifteenth. The tickets are twenty-five dollars per person, and all of the proceeds are going to benefit Phila Stocking. Every year, well, I think Phila Stocking has been in existence for about five years now, and they go to all the social services, send us their requests, and last year, I believe about twenty-five hundred stockings went out. And these stockings go out to members of the community who have nothing else that they get for Christmas except this one stocking that's filled by volunteers of the community. So I would urge you, if you can't make the dinner at the Salmon Berry Catering, we'll be hosting the event. And it will be at the Grand Ballroom of the Grand Oregon Lodge, six oh four seventh Street, Oregon City. Again, tickets are twenty-five dollars a person. And to reserve space, you call the number five oh three, two three eight, zero four seven six. That is announcement number one. Announcement number two is tomorrow afternoon, the Citizen Involvement Committee is going to be hosting a candidates forum that will be viewed on Willamette Falls Cable. This is going to be for the city commissioners' positions here in Oregon City, and there will be about an hour's worth of questions and answers with the candidates for everything from citizen involvement, budget, economic development. And it will be on the Willamette Falls cable station. I'm not sure where that is on your dial, but it should be on the TV later this week, and there should be some good information on there, and I urge you to watch if you get a chance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This evening, we're going to be discussing and cleaning up any code changes and map amendments as part of our comprehensive plan and zoning code update that was implemented on June eighteenth, two thousand and four. And do I need to read my legal script this evening? No. Okay, well, that's nice. All righty, so do you want to start us out with that, then?
Sure, thank you, Commissioner, or Chair Carter. In the packet that you received, we've outlined the changes that have been made to the code. The comprehensive plan and the zoning map amendments that are proposed have not changed since the last time we met. There were two properties in Park Place that we had discussed removing, and we have. They were a split zone between residential and industrial. We just maintain the existing zoning. But other than that, all the maps are identical to what we reviewed prior. We did receive three letters today that I'll enter into the record. Exhibit A is from Ernie Platt of the Home Builders Association. You have Exhibits A and Exhibit B on your, on the dais. Exhibit A, Dear Chair Carter and Commissioners, on behalf of the twelve thousand-plus member firms of the Home Builders Association, I am writing in support of the latest version dated September twenty-seventh and including language as proposed by staff as to how to measure the width of a garage. Owe the proposed amendments to Chapter seventeen of the zoning code to design standards. I wish to thank and commend the staff and the commission for their willingness to discuss the proposed text of this amendment. In my opinion, we now have a workable enforceable code. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of the process. Exhibit B is a letter received from Mr. and Mrs. Peaslee. You have that on your desk as well. My wife, Ms. Peaslee, and myself own two acres, two areas of land that are impacted by this proposed zoning plan for industrialization. The first area is approximately four acres, seeing closed map area A, that would be on the back of the sheet. We have a house on this land and have lived here since nineteen seventy-six. The land is not suitable for industrial use because of a steep bluff that leads to Caulfield Creek. There is no room for an industrial building. Also, there is no access to Highway two thirteen for the industrial use. The second area is twenty-two and a half acres, which is landlocked with respect to road outlets to Highway two thirteen. We will be forced to pay industrial-orientated land taxes for land we cannot sell. We have owned this land since nineteen fifty-eight and feel that the campus industrial zoning is too restrictive. If we are forced to sell, we insist on selling all twenty-two and a half acres at once. We feel also that campus industrial is not attracted, industrial uses is not attracted to this large land area, and if we allowed subdivision, we would have a complicated mess on our hands. Sincerely, Mr. and Mrs. Peaslee. The third letter is a one-page letter dated today, October eleventh. It'll be entered as Exhibit C. You do not have a copy of this. I just received it. To whom it may concern, this is in regards to Oregon City's recent change in the laws regarding farming within the city limits. I would really like to see the rural character maintained in this community. I love that about Oregon City. Please reconsider these anti-rural decisions, laws that affect Oregon City's residents. Even though I'm not a resident of Oregon City, I consider myself and my son members of this community. As I have transferred my son's Lake Uswego School District monies to Oregon City School District so that he is able to attend the Linkup School at Eastern Community Center, thank you for this opportunity to have my voice heard sincerely. And I'm sorry, Carrie Cedarland, I believe. And like I said, that's entered as Exhibit C. That's all the written testimony that we've received, other than what's in your packet. So this is what we received today. Most of the code changes, as outlined in the staff report that you received, are housekeeping in nature. We would request that under Chapter seventeen thirty-four, which is the mixed-use downtown district, that we add as a conditional use allowed in that zone, parking lots not in conjunction with a primary use. This would be a parking garage or a lot for a parking area. It was in seventeen fifty-six, which is the normal conditional uses. However, mixed-use downtown does not reference that section. The mixed-use downtown has its own specific conditional uses, so we need to add it to that section to allow a process to review an application for a parking lot not associated with a retail or office or commercial use in the downtown.
Okay, so are you thinking that would be an outright permitted use or a conditional use permitted use?
We would recommend putting it under the conditional uses.
I would agree with that.
The other significant change that we've been reviewing and discussing recently and we've been working on in work sessions is the language addressing farm uses in Oregon City. And based on the work sessions that we've had in working with property owners, Clackamas County Soil Conservation District, the state, as well as yourselves, as you're well aware of, what staff would recommend doing is putting in to the R ten, the R eight, and the R six zones, the original language that existed prior to June eighteenth as a permitted use, and to continue working on appropriate language to make sure that we get everything in there that everyone would like to see and come back and revise the code at a later date. There are many, many impacts, as you're well aware of, associated with trying to write code to address farm uses of different types, different sizes. There's also issues with stormwater, the city's MPDS permit that need to be considered. And we'd like to work with Public Works as well to try and address the runoff concerns and how those may impact the MPDS permit that we currently have and need to comply As I stated, you're well aware of how complicated this issue is to try and come up with code language that addresses all the issues and meets as well as the applicant and property owner's wishes for uses on that land. But we, you know, open that up for deliberation and offer that as an option, option for you.
Okay.
And the previous language, it's in the code, but I will just go ahead and read it, is as a permitted use would be farms, commercial or truck gardening, and horticultural nurseries on a lot, not less than twenty thousand square feet in area. Commercial buildings are not permitted.
That's all it says about it?
That was the previous language that we had, yes.
Okay, pretty slim.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Mr. Conkle, what would be involved in amending the comp plan at a later date for just that one item?
Amending the zoning code?
Would it be full planning commission and city council discussion?
Yes, it would.
But we don't have to send a citywide renotice to change it because it's a code?
Well, there's a couple of ways we could handle that. One is to, assuming that the comp plan is approved at some point soon in the future, is that we could re-advertise the whole farm use issue, or we could keep, we could keep our, when we, if the ordinance is approved for the comp plan, we could keep it open for a number of weeks or even months to get through that process. That's how we handled the update, as you recall. We had an ordinance approving the original update of the comp plan, and then the ordinance established a date certain to deal with these cleanup issues. So we could do that same process again.
Okay.
So there's a couple of different options, a couple of different ways we could notice this.
Okay, so the second alternative seems like the most economical alternative.
It probably would be, yes.
All righty.
I guess we've, in the staff report, we laid out the twenty-seven major changes in the code, and be glad to either walk through them all, or would you rather ask me questions once you've had deliberation or taken public testimony and I can clear up anything at that point?
I think what I prefer to do is take public testimony and see what the issues are, and then go through any, any issues that the planning commissioners have that they want clarification on.
Sure.
Okay. I did want to say this evening that I wanted to thank, you know, Ernie Platt and the Home Builders Association, and the gentlemen who have come to several of our work session meetings to help us hammer out appropriate design standards for residential housing. That was very beneficial for both of us. Coming to the table in a cooperative and work-together kind of way really produced a good result, and it was a good learning experience for the planning commission, and I hope to say that maybe they learned something about the process of planning as well. And we're also in that process right now with regards to the, what we're calling urban market gardening and urban market farming, because that is a very big issue. And my gosh, once we started to, you know, delve into it, there's, there's a lot to it, and we want to be very careful about trying to be able to have language that properly integrates the, the rights of urban dwellers who are inside a city limit and have certain expectations of what the city provides for them, and also to be able to protect the rights of people who are property owners on a little bit of a larger scale who want to do gardening or small-scale farming inside the city limits. And because it is a complicated process, I think when we have our deliberation about it and everything, that it would be good to give us a little bit more time to work on this so that we can craft language that will benefit both the residents on both sides of this issue. So again, the process, when it's allowed to work properly and have the time that it takes to get the job done in the detail that needs to be done to facilitate coming up with the right answers, I think we'll be able to come up with the right answers and the right language to be able to facilitate this. So we appreciate all the people who have, have taken the time to come and come to our meetings and, and help us become informed on these issues. It's very, very beneficial and very important, and it really serves the process very well. So thank you. So do we want to jump into public testimony, then?
Yep.
Okay. I guess we won't, do we want to go in order, or just?
I've got a list of names.
Okay.
I'll just call folks up.
Okay.
And if they can just state their name and their address.
Okay.
Off of the record, we'd appreciate it. Mr. Dan Berg.
Dan Berg, two oh one two two, South Malala Avenue, Oregon City. And I'm for the farm changes that are proposed, farming over to twenty thousand square feet. And I think ought to be expanded to protect the existing people that are out there and possibly any other small truck farmers that may be providing vegetables and stuff for our community that are be locally grown and organic, possibly. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Jim Hossen?
Hanson.
Hanson, I'm sorry.
Commissioners, my name is Jim Hanson. I live at one five six eight eight, South Old Acres Lane. Our parcel is not in the city limits, but is adjacent to the city limits and would expect it to be annexed in probably in the next ten years. I'm here to, to ask that the farming ordinance not be implemented as currently in plan and that the planning commission look at other ways to accommodate the mixed use of both, sorry, of both farming, farming and urban dwelling by possibly approaching the issue through different mitigation requirements when there is farming going on with inside the urban, urban boundary. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
What's your objection to having farming inside the urban growth?
No, my objection is to not allowing farming with inside the urban growth, or the urban
Inside the city limits?
City limits.
And what is your objection to that?
My objection is, is that I think it restricts land use and creates a situation for those landowners that would like to have the ability to do small-scale farming. And I feel that that's not appropriate in the context of our community at large.
So what kind of mitigation measures would you like us to consider?
Well, I think the concerns of urban dwellers would be things like view shed issues, odor shed issues. You know, clearly, a pig farm in the middle of the city is not appropriate. But I think, you know, obviously vegetable farming, flower growing, you know, certain kinds of animals may be acceptable, depending on how the manure is dealt with, as long as the numbers are within reasonable limits. You know, we run a horse boarding facility, and we have an odor control program and a fly control program, and, you know, we have no problems with odor, and there's really no reason why the horses can't be there. And our neighbors think it's wonderful to have a very rural feeling around what is otherwise a fairly urban area with, you know, subdivisions and, and, you know, the golf course, of course, creates a more rural atmosphere. But I think there's a way to work a mixed use, as long as it's done intelligently and as long as the landowners wishing to do some sort of farming-type activity are willing to work with whatever planning guidelines are set down to create the correct mitigation measures to make sure that everybody can be happy together.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So as an interim measure, would you be comfortable with leaving it at, it's permitted within, on a twenty thousand square foot lot until we have a chance to work out these details?
Yeah, I think that's a fair compromise.
Thank you.
Mr. Jim Kozel?
Good evening, Jim Kozel, one one four six six Finnegan's Way, Oregon City, and I'm representing the Central Point Leland Road New Era Community Planning Organization. And my concerns are that whatever you do adopt, and I like your approach about going and having some hearings and working with the people as far as re, bringing this back in, the agricultural back in, that whatever it is, it also applies to areas within the urban growth boundaries, okay, in case there's some state laws and so forth that are involved here, that we make sure we consider that areas within the urban growth boundary are also covered under appropriately, under whatever you're proposing, and so that they are not restricted to certain, they are not restricted from certain things that maybe are being granted to those within the city limits. And of course, as this urban growth boundary change is, it's more likely you'll get into some larger parcels, blah, blah, but it needs to be considered so that it's fair to all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that is one of the big issues that's on the, on the table about property that is currently in the urban growth boundary, which is outside of Oregon City limits, as that property annexes in, it may annex in as, as farming property. And that's one of the big issues that's on the table is how to be able to accommodate what is currently existing as it would be annexed into the city.
Okay, there was, can I make another comment?
Sure.
Okay, and this is, you know, for, for your consideration. For example, some of the people I'll hear out of Central Point Road, for example, use some of the materials left over from the Staley Dairy Farm, but there is a state law that says if some, if odors become bothersome to some people, some people can complain, some neighbors who are urban neighbors, okay, can complain. And the state has the right to step in and tell the farmers that they can't use a part of their parcel, they cannot fertilize. And that has happened out here off Central Point Road already, so we need to take into account when you're moving in towards the farm areas and the ways of fertilizing and so forth. If somebody builds a brand-new house next to a farm, it's been there a hundred years and been using the land, that that farmer is going to be protected from the, the way that they farm their land and fertilize and so forth, and that the new people that just move in aren't going to be able to buy some ordinance that the city adopts, go and then not allow that farmer to continue the practices that he may have been doing for decades.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Carol Brando?
I'm Carol Brando. I live at one nine four three oh, South Falcon Drive, and this process is really new to me. We were here for the R eight to R ten zoning, R ten to R eight zoning, last, at the last meeting with this, and it's still a little confusing to me. Tony and a couple people I've talked to have cleared up some of the issues, but I'm not sure that most of the, most of the neighbors that I've spoken to have been confused as to the purpose of the R eight when we have half-acre parcels. And it's not clear to them still. I mean, I will go and explain to my neighbors that are there. I feel they should be able to-
I'm sorry, ma'am. And if I can just clarify, this is for on Falcon Drive?
This one is Falcon Drive, yeah.
Yeah, the zone changes from R ten to R eight on Falcon Drive.
Okay, and this is just straight zone change, residential zone change?
Yep, just to put in context.
We, as far as we understood it, we have half acres. And then R ten, which is what the city automatically did when they took us in, the city put us in R ten, they're saying to put it to R eight. And Tony's explanation makes sense to a point. So I'm not sure whether I object or not to the R eight yet. I need more information. Most of the people, I think, dividing the parcels in half would be a density change that wouldn't be too much. But if, for some reason, the R eight allowed a more compressed density, all my neighbors say no. They don't want to see that. They want to see, it's okay if you're, you can split the parcel in half, but they don't want to see increased density in there. So I guess I need more information before that, before I can really say whether or not I'm in favor of it. I don't have a problem with the neighbors splitting their property and putting it home. But if we were to have extra homes, because several of the homes went together and they put in, or flag lots were put in, and I still don't know. I just heard tonight something about flag lots are not allowed. I don't know. So my concern is, I still need some information on that. I also read through the agenda last time and saw other things like curious about permitted uses for businesses in home, not making, not, not making commodities? What is a commodity? People that internet services and that type of stuff, they make things and they sell them, is that a commodity that is not permitted? Is that an issue that's being addressed in, that was in the agenda last time? There was, I think there's one more thing I can't, those are the two first, two main things right now. The road, the road changes, were they made a long time ago, from fifty to fifty-three, or is that in this one?
The right-of-way width went to nineteen, or went to fifty-three, I believe, as in nineteen ninety-nine with the adoption of the Transportation System Plan, went, the right-of-way width for a local street went from fifty feet to fifty-three feet.
It's not in this one. Correct. It's not in this one. So it's not something you're addressing right now.
Correct.
It's something I have a question about, but it's not something I'm addressing. So I just, I still have a concern about the intent, that the end result, not the intent, but the end result of whether or not it will create too much density in there.
Okay, now, the process tonight is that hopefully we're going to be, you know, clearing up any confusion, taking the public testimony, deliberating on any other issues, and then making our, our final recommendations to the city commission. You would have a chance to speak again before the city commission when this comes before them, but otherwise, you know, we're kind of done with it tonight, except for the, except for the farm ordinance.
Yeah, well, I have, I have been doing work. I've been to the county, I've been all over, I've been talking to the city, not, only talked to him once, but I've talked to other people in the city often, and I've done different things between then and now. I haven't had enough time to really seriously find out a lot of the rest of the information.
Okay, but your next opportunity to submit testimony and affect the process after this would be at the city commission?
And is, does it mean by the time you've made your recommendations, the city pretty much, city commission has, what happens there?
We just, we just make our, our recommendations here as to what we think, you know, based on our testimony and the information that the staff provides us and everything, and our deliberation, we make our recommendation as to what we think is, you know, the right thing to do, and then we forward that recommendation to the city commission, and then they either, you know, accept it the way it is, or based on new evidence or testimony, or whatever would come before them, they could change it to be something entirely different.
Do they have meetings like this?
Right.
Okay. So that would be the thing to do, would be to watch for when that would come up on their agenda.
Okay, do they send any notices?
Yes.
I checked out the website and didn't find a lot of things that I wanted on there in the city website, so I found it hard to navigate in some areas, so.
Mm-hmm.
I may be not in the city commission. Maybe that would be easier to find that, so.
The city commission, it's got a-
Clear agenda.
An area that you go to, and you can pull the agenda up ten days, a week to ten days before, a week probably before, and you can see everything that's going to be discussed at that meeting at that time. And it's been, they've been really good about keeping that up.
Okay.
So you shouldn't have a problem finding that, as well as ours. Planning commission has a section two, and all of our agendas and minutes after the fact are all put on there.
We'll have, we'll have a date certain at the end of tonight when the next city commission meeting will be, so you'll know when this will be up for a city commission's consideration.
Okay. And there's, there's still processes for changing still occur between now and then? Okay.
But I would definitely recommend, if you have questions, you know, to talk to the staff and, and try and understand, you know, what, what, what your issues are. Because, I mean, we've gone through considerable testimony, and I think we've come up with some pretty clear statements. So if you still have questions, then, I mean, clearly, there are some things out there that we haven't made clear, so.
Yeah.
Staff can be happy to talk to you about it.
So when you call in, who are you talking to?
Well, I talk with Tony.
Tony.
Yeah, and probably Tony would be the best person to speak with.
Okay.
Thanks.
And that was Commissioner Powell speaking.
Thank you. Ms. Janine Offutt, O-F-F-U-T-T, I'm sorry.
I'm Janine Offutt. I live at nine two four Fourth Street in Oregon City, and I stand in favor of having small farms within the Oregon City limits. I used to be a small, organic farmer myself, and I feel that it's really important to honor our state's mandate to, to grow sustainably. And I think having local farms is a big part of that. You know, there's nothing quite so basic as having your food grown locally. And I don't know that I have anything more to say than that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Patricia Ginther, please.
My name is Patricia Ginther, and I live at one six three three four, South Bradley Road. So I'm actually out of the city limits, but my concern was how does something disappear without us voting on it? That was my number one concern. And I also know I'm in the proposed urban growth area, and so this would definitely affect me if I was accepted into the, the new urban growth. So I, number one, can you, can you address how it just disappeared?
Well, basically, in the process of updating our comp, there were so many issues that we were trying to- that we were trying to deal with for such a long period of time. It was about two and a half years it took us to go through the comp plan. And somehow or another, in our discussions about that, it's one of the things that just sort of fell through the cracks, I guess you could say. And in a way, it's a good thing it did, because it became an issue. And when something becomes an issue, it brings to our attention how important it is to the community and what the ramifications are of what needs to be so that it works well. As Mr. Conkle read, we have very, very little, no, language addressing parameters for these things to be in the city limits, so clearly the code language isn't sufficient anymore. And so we actually need to revisit this and revisit it with an attempt to write code language that's going to, you know, protect the urban citizens as well as the farming citizens. And we're clearly on that path now, because it has happened this way. And so, again, the process, when it's working properly, is doing exactly what it's doing. And when we get to the end of this process, we'll have the, the right result.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Ms. Tamse Seesholz?
Hi, I'm Tamse Seesholz. I live at 14450 South Holcomb Boulevard, and I want to thank you, Planning Commissioners all, for allowing me to be a part of the process. I personally feel that we've made great progress from when we first came in here August 23rd. And at that point, I just was, almost couldn't breathe. I couldn't sleep, and the future of my business and my farm was very uncertain. And at this point, I have, I'm filled with hope, not just for my little farm, but for our community. And so, thank you, thank you all. We've come a long way, and, and again, I, I thank you. I have nothing but hope at this point.
Good, thank you.
Ms. Hammond Williams, please.
Hi, I'm Jackie Hammond Williams. I live at 14422 Holcomb. Basically, I mirror exactly what Tam just said. I came up here to thank the City Planning Commission and Tony. We had some really great ideas at the last work session, and I think we, we moved ahead in a positive direction. And I sincerely hope and believe that we will have the reinstatement of farm uses within city limits. I really do believe that it would be a good thing for the city and for the, the urban dwellers, as well as the landowners that want to do something on their land. But I just wanted to give you this update. I was driving here tonight, my husband excitedly called me on the cell phone. He said he'd just watched something on Channel 8 tonight, and the news segment said that Portland has just granted a permit for an organic urban dairy farm in southeast Portland, which will have an educational purpose also. So I thought, apparently it was heralded as the first urban farm in United States, which I, I don't know if that's true, certainly in the northwest here. So I'm thinking that, you know, first Portland and second Oregon City. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall, please.
My name is Dan Hall. I live at 19000 Central Point Road. First of all, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to address you on this issue. I have a few questions. Specifically, 20,000 square feet, why not less? Why was this number brought up? Is this?
For the moment, it's because it was the original code language, and we're going back to that for the moment.
Okay, okay. The home that I live in is on the National Historic Registry, and my wife and I, we've lived there 20 years. We purchased this home when it was country. It was a farm. Originally, it was a land grant to Samuelus White, and we took this on to restore it, specifically because of the country field. Now, we've had a lot of comments from people, we've had a lot of visitors, we have to have it open once a year, and because it was kind of a farm area, we do have horses, we do have nursery stock, we have historical fruit trees on this piece of property. It's approximately three and a half acres. In that 20 years, we have bought the other properties next to us, so we could keep that farm field. We have, we were afraid we were going to be in a fishbowl with all the two-story homes that were being built around us in subdivisions. We were not allowed to vote on our annexation into the city. This did not please a lot of us along Central Point Road, but we accepted that. Oregon City, we've, we've enjoyed all the services, and we've supported Oregon City through the Police Department and many of the functions throughout the city. The thing that we're concerned about is, since we have horses, we do have, and we have had a couple sheep, we do an odor control program, we also do a fly control program and all. Is this going to keep us from being able to do, continue doing what we've been doing for 20 years? Is this, this is our big concern. We want to be able to, to continue living there.
If we, as a commission, decide to do as Tony suggests and go back to the 20,000-square-foot, it would be 20,000-square-foot lots or greater. So since you have a 3.5-acre site, you would clearly be allowed to continue.
Okay, if, okay, now-
Excuse me, that was Commissioner Mengeleberg speaking. Go ahead.
The other homes that we have are less than that, but it's the acreage behind them that we use for our horses. We farm that acreage, we hay it, we sell the hay. Is that going to, because it's not specifically part of our piece of property, is that going to be a problem?
If, if, if they own the property, and they, and they have been doing this, they're grandfathered in, correct? So until you sell their-
They're in the grandfather clause.
Oh, absolutely. Until you sell your property, or whatever you do, it, it won't affect you. If you were to sell your property, then whatever rules and regulations fall into place, then, then the next person would be, would have to fall into that. But you, as long as you maintain your home and your property as is, you're, you're with, you'll be grandfathered in.
Okay.
And actually, I'm sorry, Commissioner Powell, and you actually have to discontinue that use for more than a year to lose the nonconforming. It actually transfers with the property.
That's true. So if, so if the next person who came in did the same thing you did within a year, they would, they could be, they would be able to maintain that as well. But after a year, then it's, all bets are off, and you go back, start over.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Mars?
My name is Ariel Mars, 2330 South Molalla Avenue, Oregon City. I'm representing the Caris Community Planning Organization. We voted at our September meeting to address this issue. We are the CPO, or Community Planning Organization, just south of you along Highway 213. We are still large agricultural holdings, well, large compared to Oregon City. But we want to be very proactive in encouraging smaller farming activities. I would hope one of the things that you would do when you're regarding this, and code language has come up, but I think it's important to use language that people also understand. I wouldn't want me next door, I have 150 goats, if I lived in the city. I am a large farmer for this area. But when you start talking small farms, you're talking, maybe you have nine goats or 10 goats. So I would hope you'd be very definitive about the smallholder issue versus the large farm. Maybe even the terminology "smallholder" might, which is a national term, might be better for you to use rather than "farm." Because I know the image of large mooing animals and horses with big feet and all of this, call to mind, things, maybe people from the city, and maybe even we would not, I wouldn't want a pig farm next door, okay? But I think it's real important to use the proper terminology. Yes, we do want to support these small farms. Our farm particularly acts as a rural heritage center. We have inner-city children come out. They do a lot of hands-on, very surprised children figuring out where milk and eggs come from. But it's, it's a real important thing, and I think it's really important within the city. Because even though you're next to a large agricultural area, you do not necessarily have children who have hands-on experience. Little places like they're talking about, six acres, 20,000 square feet, that can still be a continuation of our rural heritage. The kids can go out, they can look at eggs, they can see how plants are grown, touch chickens, and I think that's real important, not just for our heritage, but because it's an important part of growing up that we don't want to see lost. So as a farmer, I certainly stand in approval of, of your supporting the smaller farm, particularly if it's a smaller organic farm. And our CPO would like to go on record as saying that we are also very supportive, and anything that we can do to help you, we'd be more than happy to do, and we thank you for the opportunity of speaking tonight.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Peterson, please.
Hi, my name is Phil Peterson. I live at 1527 Killarney Drive in West Lynn. And even though I'm not a resident of Oregon City, I do own a three-acre parcel here, and that's what brings me here tonight to weigh in, in favor of continuing to allow farm use. When I bought this piece of property approximately four years ago, it was zoned R10, and my hope was someday I could develop it, but at the time, there was issues with water service to that area, which since have been fixed. But there's also issues with allowing a street from this property onto Holcomb Boulevard because of sightline issues and all that. So I, I have known when I bought it, and I know now that I probably can't develop it until adjacent properties develop and bring a street in. So in a way, even though I'm zoned R10, there's not much I can use this property for, other than renting the house out. And then there's about two and a half acres of pasture, which increases the amount I can rent the property for. So by allowing farm use of it, it, it increases the return to me, and by disallowing farm use in the future would probably, you know, financially injure me. And I'm sure I'm not the only property owner in, in this situation here in Oregon City. Also, I think having a number of, of mixed farm use spread throughout the city actually adds value to the city. I, I know I've heard some of the builders in a big subdivision next to mine have, have mentioned that they think it adds to the salability of their houses to, you know, that people can look out and see some pasture land with a horse grazing in the field and whatnot. So I'd just like to say, I, I hope, you know, Oregon City continues to allow farm use.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Dingus?
Name is John Dingus, 18896 South Rose Road, Oregon City. Wasn't really sure what to expect when it came to the meeting tonight. I had to read the, the agenda from your work session the other night, and regarding the agriculture issue and some things in there I didn't agree with. But you're really to be complimented on the effort that you're making. You, you realize there's a problem with this thing, and you're making an outstanding effort to make sure this thing is looked at thoroughly and with work sessions and input from the public, so that hopefully you can come up with a set of, of a code that will serve the needs of the people of Oregon City and meet all the legal requirements and make Oregon City a much more livable city. We've got a great city here. There's been a lot of things happening in the past, and a lot of people wish it hadn't happened, but you, you're doing a hell of a good job of trying to straighten a lot of these things out. I was raised on a farm. I lived on, we lived on 180 acres. We had hogs, cattle, sheep, you know, this whole sorts of other thing. There's been comment about hogs. Actually, hogs are one of the cleanest animals there. If, it's like everything else, you have to properly take care of. You can't let horses out here and just not take care of, you're going to have a sting. They'll make a mixed sting. I just hope that when you develop the plan, you speak to knowledgeable people and not just say, "Well, gee, I don't think this would be a good idea." If you've never been a farmer and never been in that situation, how do you know?
Right.
I live on three acres, the city's right across the street. They're pushing, knocking on my door. We've raised all sorts of crops. My son lives within the city. I'm not sure the exact size of his lot. I, I would say it's 6,000, it could be an 8,000. Now, he's a very avid gardener. He raises a beautiful garden. Actually, the wife's been doing most of this here for him, because he's had some medical problems. But if, if you could see the produce he gets off of that garden, what more than he can use, he gives it to the neighbors. There's many people here that really would enjoy doing that. That's why in here, when you're limited to 20,000, keep in mind that there's people in Portland that are on little, little 6,000-square-foot and smaller lots that are growing an abundance of produce in their backyards. They don't like grass. Grass is, is work. Their whole backyard is, is garden. It's just phenomenal what can be done. Please, you'd be a compliment on the job you're doing, and thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Hogan, please.
Kathy Hogan, 1972 on South Central Point Road. I'm astonished, because my experience with coming to the comprehensive plan, I wasn't allowed to speak. So if you're changing your views and allowing people in listening, I commend you, but I doubt it. But barring that, Ms. Tam came to our Neighborhood Association, so we had a meeting with South Ann and Hazelboro Westling Farm. She presented her views, and we actually voted that we were in favor. We had nobody against the small farm on Central Point Road. There is a, a business that's outside the city that will one day be brought in too. That would be very important, and he doesn't want in the city. And he's sure that if he is, that you will take his nursery and not allow it. And it's a very good garden nursery. They have wonderful plants there, and they do a very good business. So I think that you need to continue to allow these things that have been grandfathered in and let these people know, because some people do not understand that they can continue doing it. And so our neighborhood, two neighborhoods are for allowing the small farms. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not have any other sign-in sheets for people who wish to speak, or anybody in the crowd wish to come up and speak. We have one person. You can just fill out a form when you're done, I'd appreciate it.
Hi. My name's Renee Elting, 16098 South Spangler Road. And we're nowhere near the city limits, and we're pretty far away from the urban growth boundary, but we plan to be in our place for a very long time, so I thought I would weigh in my views on this. I'm also a very active 4H leader, and we have about 20 head of fiber goats, and I raise poultry. And one of the things that I would really like for you to take into consideration is making it not so hard for people to obtain their farming status. So that would mean maybe not having it cost so much to license, not having them have to jump through a gazillion hoops. There are things that are very practical, you know, making sure manure is taken care of, not only for, you know, convenience or aesthetics, but also for, you know, the health of our land and our creeks and our streams. But there are other things that, you know, some people would consider to be quite hoop-oriented, you know, like making sure that, I, I don't know, it just seems like whenever there's a form to fill out, or it's sometimes overkill. So that would be my thing that I'd like you to consider when you put this, that we don't word it to death, that there's no leniency, or there's no room for variation. Because in agricultural, you will find that processes change very rapidly, your diversity changes very rapidly, and maybe one year it might be very good for one type of farming, and the next year, you know, the bottom falls out of it. So making it easy for farms to be diverse in whatever they do, so that's all I can say.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none.
Okay. Just for a little bit of clarity- Okay. Just for a little bit of clarity on the farm issue, we, at our last work session, had Mr. Jim Johnson from the Oregon State, whatever.
Department of Ag.
Pardon?
Department of Ag.
Department of Ag, and a gentleman from the county, what was his, his name?
Rick Ruin.
Rick Ruin. They were both at our work session, and they have definitely helped get us going in the right direction, and to understand that there are things that have to be adhered to, both on the state and county level. For the city, we're concerned with compatibility issues with the urban environment, and any kind of traffic issues are the two big issues that we're having. We're also hoping to have a work session with the city commission to, to work on this issue jointly with them, so that we can have their input early on in the process. And these are some of the things that we are working towards to do our work and go through this process, and get to the, to the right solution. All of your testimony is very valuable, and I encourage you to stay involved in the process, so that we can address the concerns, and understand what those concerns are, and be able to facilitate the needs of all the people. So, with that, I guess we would be ready to close the public hearing for this evening. So moved. So, the planning commission at this point will begin deliberation on these planning amendments, comp plan amendments, zoning changes. I have a question about this Falcon Road, I'm a little confused about what that is in regard to.
Okay. If I can just show you on the map real quick.
Please.
So, currently, and it doesn't show on the zoning map on the right that we have hung up, currently to the north of that property is R-6, single family. To the south of that property is R-8. That property in the middle, where we're proposing is all zoned R-10. So, we've proposed to take it to R-8 to be consistent, and provide a changing of property sizes from R-6 to R-8. Thank you.
R-8 all around.
Correct.
Use of R-6.
There's, there's R-6 to the north of the property, and R-8 to the south of the property. What has occurred, there've been three requests for zone changes to R-8 in that area, because the properties are extremely close to 20,000 to 40,000 square feet, rough, approximately in that, in that area. So, I'm sorry, 20,000 square feet. At R-10, you obviously need 10,000 square feet per lot in order to do a partition. So, when you look at the properties as they are now, they have enough square footage to be partitioned into two lots. However, in order to meet the design standards for our streets, we need a dedication. Once that dedication occurs, there is not enough property left to do an R-10's partition. What that means is either the applicant needs to apply for a zone change, which adds an extra process to go through in order to do a partition, or they need to request a variance, and our variance is a hardship variance. It's a very difficult one to meet, and when you already have one lot with a house on it, to come in and say, "We would like a variance to the lot size requirements, so that we can partition the property," it's one, another process to go through, and two, it's very difficult to prove how that's a hardship. You purchased the property, you can make an argument that the foot and a half dedication is the hardship. But, so, since we've received three of these, we support what's being done. We've approved the zone changes, that we would go ahead and do the zone change for the property owners now. As I've discussed with Ms. Brandow, was, some of the concerns she voiced to me was the potential for a developer to come in, acquire all those properties, and increase the amount of houses to be put on there. We just, we don't see that, these lots, you're going to get to, you're going to get a partition of the property. I suppose it is possible that a developer could come in and buy every piece of those properties and re-lay out everything. It is highly, highly unlikely. It's, would not be worth it. It would not be worth it to remove all the infrastructure that's already in place to add one, one lot, maybe one, one, one and a half in the, in the end, to what's there right now.
Okay.
So, we did receive a request from Mr. Berg, he owns property in that area for this change. We also felt as staff that it was appropriate in light of the existing zoning around it, as well as the requests for zone changes, which have resulted in the R-8 zoning designation, and the partition that followed that, to do this for the property owners.
Okay. Okay, well, that makes it very clear for me. Does that make it more clear for you?
I guess then my question.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, sorry.
You need to do this.
Closed. Public hearing is closed. I can't do that, breaking the rules. Anyway, that made it more clear for me as what, what this is about, and it makes, anytime the city can be in a position to actually be able to facilitate requests that are in the best use for the residents, having had three requests to go to an R-8, and be able to facilitate that because of the road dedication and everything, that makes perfect clear sense. It actually allows the homeowners, the property owners, the flexibility to do what they would want to do, if they would want to do it.
And I think that's one thing we do need to clarify, you know, one of the concerns raised was that the city is just doing this to force these people to hook up to sewer. We're not out there looking for failing septic systems, they'll be coming to us if it does occur. There is no septic, there is no sanitary sewer in the road right now, so it comes in as development occurs. Allowing the partition of a property to allow two lots would potentially offset some of those costs, should septic systems start to fail. You know, the vintage house, at 30 years, you might start to see that potentially. But the city is not driving this, or going out to look for failing septic systems and changing this zone to force these people in any way to A, divide, or B, hook up to the city's sanitary system.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarification, then. Commissioners, does anybody have other questions of staff about the changes that we have?
There are a couple of letters in our packet, and the one that comes to mind is from Sherri McGinnis, that wasn't sure how their, how this change would affect their property, and wanted us to postpone a decision until they'd have a chance to talk with you. I just wanted to make sure that we're not moving.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm not following you. There was a, from...
This would be in the packet, the packet that looks like this, and it would be letter, or item B. It says that she heard that there might be a potential change on her property, and she called and wanted us to, to hold until she had a chance to figure out how it impacted her property. And there was another letter, I can't remember who it was from, that had the same concern, so I wanted to...
I'm sorry, are we going back two meetings on that packet? Or is that this?
It could be. This letter is October 20, August 20th, so...
Okay. I believe that this is in the area of the Falcon Drive.
Same issue.
Same issue.
Okay.
Yep, I believe, yeah.
Right.
Well, I had a question on the letter we received today, exhibit B. If I'm looking at this correctly, that area, if I'm looking at it correctly, that area, we aren't changing anything. It's FU10, and...
Well, it's...
Or it's changed, it has already been changed.
It's, it's had the comprehensive plan designation of industrial, but it's been FU10 is its current zoning. We're proposing to take it to a city zoning designation of campus industrial.
Right.
Yes. So, it would change the zoning designation from FU10 to campus industrial.
And just to give you a little history on that parcel and some of the surrounding ones, this was a, a big issue at Metro, because there was all this discussion about the need to expand the urban growth boundary recently for industrial lands, and the city of Wilsonville chimed in and said, "Hey, we have some property that shows industrial on our comp plan map, but it doesn't have the zone," and Metro didn't include that in their calculations. So, then, our mayor chimed in too, and said, "You know, we have some significant acreage with the same situation, comp plan industrial, not zoned." And so, together, a lot of the suburban cities convinced Metro to include these properties and Wilsonville's properties in that calculation of industrial lands, which in effect reduced the amount of acreage, acreage they had to bring into the UGB. Yeah. So, that's why, part of the reason you're seeing this.
Okay, that, that's clear to me. I appreciate that, because it, I wasn't understanding why, why the issue, but now I do.
And, and that subject B as well. In, in working with the high school, we did get property dedication that would have a second east-west street, the extension of Myers Road, that would then intersect with the intersection of Myers Road and 213, which would go through this property, allowing an alternative access to Myers Road and Glen Oak. I think that addresses the, getting access to the site.
So, what about, what about the drop-off into Coffield Creek?
There, there probably are some limitations in terms of water quality and steep slopes. How much, we're not aware yet until we look at the site.
So, the plan for the extension has been made, correct? It's, so we've actually got a plan?
Yes, we do.
Okay. I thought so, and I thought that was the property, and now, then I got confused. So, that's, I'm glad you brought that up, because I think...
If you're looking at the map, on the right side of the map along Beaver Creek Road where the high school property is, we have the, the piece that's marked with the flag, and then below that, we have a piece that's R-10. It runs right along that property line right there, in an east-to-west fashion, and then it'll swing to the north a little bit, and then up to the intersection with Myers and 213.
Okay.
Okay, so then this property is coming in on the zone map as...
Campus industrial.
Okay.
Gotcha. Thank you, that's helpful.
And the...
This, this was part of the island annexations, and originally, all the residential properties, the low-density residential automatically went to R-10 when they were annexed, regardless of where they were in the city. The industrial comprehensive plan designation properties had three options, campus industrial, light industrial, heavy industrial, and our code didn't automatically designate one. That's why they maintain their FU10 designation. Normally, during island annexation, they would have been given a zoning designation as any, in the future would now. So, this is for, as Dan, Mr. Journalist stated, as well as...
Okay, and this, this zoning is not going to devalue the property?
It would...
It would enhance the property from FU...
10.
10 to industrial. Okay.
Or campus industrial.
Campus industrial, that's what I meant.
At the current zoning, you have to have 10-acre lots. They're not even recognized in the city.
Okay.
I got one more. In exhibit 10 in our packet, the person writing it brings up a good point about, or maybe you could just...
Which piece of packet are we in?
Address it. In our, tonight's packet here. They, they talk about the drive-through issue. What's your, after reading this letter, what's your take on...
This is for the mixed-use downtown, the Mr. Kloss is stating that drive-throughs have been, only been associated with banks, and we changed the conditional use, and this would be on page 30 of version three, as a conditional use, we've, excuse me, we've removed the requirement that drive-throughs only be associated with a bank. We now allow drive-through facilities as a conditional use, except for drive-through car washes.
I see, okay.
So, we've, I believe we've addressed his concern.
Great.
Okay, so that's mixed-use downtown, but does that come all the way up Malala Avenue as well? Because we've had this conversation before, and I still get confused about that as well, because I thought we had decided that there would not be any drive-through establishments on Malala Avenue in our mixed-use...
Malala Avenue is predominantly mixed-use corridor one, and car washes and drive-in or drive-through facilities are a conditional use in mixed-use corridor one and mixed-use corridor two. So, it's not an outright permitted use, they'd have to come before the planning commission as a conditional use to have a drive-through along that street. That's correct.
Okay, so they can be allowed under conditional use.
Correct.
Because I've been toying with that little issue myself here.
Yes.
Okay. Alrighty. Any other questions or clarification? Actually, I think, you know, I think overall, you know, this is, we've done such a good job of clarifying things and smoothing out so many wrinkles, and the scope of how huge it was, still is, you know, just, you can hardly even think of how huge it was. So, I feel like we're in really good shape now.
I guess, just so we're clear, under, on page 36, it's our administration and procedures for how we notice properties and applications and whatnot. And we separated out the appeal process, because what historically had happened was, when an appeal was filed, we had to revert back to, as if it were a brand-new application, re-notice everybody within 300 feet, put it in the paper and whatnot. So, we've broken out the appeal, since it is a different process, after all, the public testimony has been, and a decision's been made, to only require that written notice of the appeal be sent to the appellant, the applicant, the property owner, and all persons who testified either orally or in writing. So, everybody was standing 14 days prior to the hearing. It gives us a little bit more flexibility in meeting our 120-day requirements. Usually, we'd have to plan out about 40 days to get an appeal in, and that's cutting it close.
Okay.
Would that be everybody that testified orally and writing on that particular issue, or just everyone?
No, everybody who testified.
Okay.
Okay, good. I think that was a good move.
Let's see, someone brought up...
Excuse, excuse me, so that's an appeal, Planning Commission to City Commission, right?
Of staff or Planning Commission to the City Commission, that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Let's see, I guess someone brought up home occupations.
Oh, yeah. That was, that was the other question I had.
I believe that's going to be page 40. Let's see.
What was that term she used?
She wanted definition of commodity.
Yeah, that was it.
Page 40.
And actually, we don't have, we didn't change any, sorry, give me one second.
Page 40, it doesn't look like the right page.
It's page, it's page 10, I'm sorry, it's the definition of home occupation. And what we traditionally do is, we consider sales, like a retail establishment from a home occupation, so you have customers coming to your house, as if it were, and you're selling something from the house. If you're doing it over the internet, you sell something on eBay, for example, and then you ship it, that's, that's a completely appropriate home occupation. The difference is, when you have, you know, Tony's Retail Shop Bookstore, and you have clients or retail customers coming in a residential zone to your property with store hours and whatnot, that's not an allowed home occupation.
Okay, so commodities in this sense means hard goods for sale?
From the property to the public.
From the property.
So, anything that's not a service.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
So, impact of, really, there's no real traffic, traffic impact, other than delivery vehicles perhaps.
UPS truck or whatever.
UPS or something like that. And, and all, actually, all the other codes would, I mean, you, let's just take somebody that is a collector, and goes out and collects items for eBay, and all of a sudden, on their front yard appears a tent, which is covering a lot of products that they are, you know, attempting to sell on eBay. I mean, that, that would fall into our code. I mean, we've got our, that'd be a code, code compliance issue at that point.
Correct. Correct. And you're not allowed to have storage outside with a home occupation.
Right, exactly. And that's, and see, I think that's, we need to make sure that's clear, because I, that would be my only concern about home occupation, and I, and I like it the way it is, other than just make sure that we don't have outside storage allowed.
Yep.
Could be a kind of problem.
Anything else? No? Okay.
Do we want to talk as a commission about the farm use? It seems like we've decided to revert to the existing standard, but I'm not sure we all nodded our heads at the same time about that, so...
Mm-hmm. Are we in consensus about, and we would need to go to a date certain, so that we wouldn't have to... have to re-notice, which I think is important, we need to take action that saves the city money as opposed to costing the city money?
Well, we'll work on the notification issue, but I think the issue is, is that we need to spend more time discussing this, and I think maybe in the future would be good to have a work session with some of the folks that showed up here and get some more ideas. And take, you know, take some time.
Well, I would like to open it up, you know, in a town, not town hall meeting, but an open work session with the City Commission as well. So we're all hearing at the same time, and we can all walk, talk through it.
Yeah, and that's gonna be a segue into what I talk about once you make a decision on the comp plan, but, you know, we have a work session coming up in a week, and that's some, a topic that we probably want to talk about, is how to go through the process for the farm use.
Right. But I would, I just want to get it done, and, you know, we all want to get it moving and moving forward.
It seems like, in my way of thinking, at this point, it would be good to have some discussion with the City Commission to see what their concerns and, you know, kind of where we're at with it now, and then go back into planning commission work sessions with the public with a little bit clearer idea of, you know, whether the City Commission is kind of, you know, tracking in the same direction we are and what their concerns are, so when we come back into the work session, we can, you know, hammer out the issues that might be of concern to them as opposed to doing it the other way. Seems like it would be more beneficial to get their input earlier rather than later.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion, is just get a little bit of direction from them next week, and then, again, and then break away as a planning commission and spend some time with a lot of the folks that are interested.
Okay. Anyone have any objections to that?
No.
Okay. Alrighty. Now, I think that takes care of all of our issues then. So...
For tonight.
Yeah, for the moment.
Took us 20 years to do one, and now we've done another one, and what?
I know it takes 20 years.
So, do you want a motion to separate these things out, a separate motion for the farm ordinance to revert? Do you want a separate motion for...
I was just gonna say, you go ahead and make a motion to approve the comp plan, the map changes and the code changes as provided in the staff report dated today, and I think we'll have it covered.
So does the staff report dated today have the language that reverts back? Okay.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay. We have a second. We have a motion with a second, please poll the commission.
Commissioner Orson.
Aye.
Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingleberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Lejoie.
Aye.
Sheriff Pershman Carter.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, thank you very much.
Yippee!
And that was...
I would just, I just want to say, I want to compliment you guys really for an excellent job, and I, we all heard the issues and we all heard the concerns, but you guys have really done, I mean, just a spectacular job in pulling all this together and dealing with all the issues and getting involved and doing the right things. And you make us look good, and I frankly appreciate that a lot. So thank you so much for all the extra effort.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And that was Commissioner Powell speaking.
Oh, yeah.
And I'd like to say, I was, I was reading the previous comp plan and some of the zoning, and just about a week ago, and then looking at what we have now, it's night and day.
Yeah, night and day.
It's absolutely night and day.
Great work.
Yeah. I feel really good about having done all this. Now that we're at this point, I feel really good about it. Finally.
Really?
Let's see, did we have any other issues? I wanted to just follow up on if there's any news about our appeals that are on the board.
Well, I just want to remind everybody that this next Monday on the 18th at 5:30, right here in City Hall, we're gonna discuss a couple of things. One is the comp plan, you're gonna basically hand off your recommendations to the City Commission. And then, there's also an agenda item to talk about communications between the City Commission and the Planning Commission and this whole issue of membership on the Planning Commission. And then if we have time, hopefully, we can talk a little bit about a new issue that's arisen at Metro, and it's a whole concept of what they're calling hard edges, which means looking at permanent urban growth boundaries. As you know, right now, they're looked at every five years. There are some discussions at the Metro, at the Metro elected officials' level where they're talking about establishing permanent boundaries. So we might talk a little bit about that with the City Commission.
I have a question about that. That puts us in danger of potential moratorium, and I'm not sure we can do that according to state law.
Good question.
Is there information on this that we can research on the web or something that you saw?
No, it's just, I mean, we're ahead of the game. I just heard about it from, you know, the inside of Metro, so this will at least put us in a position to, you know, talk about what we want to do and what kind of positions we want to take as a planning commission and a city commission. So there really hasn't been any work or papers or studies done on it yet, just the concept.
Okay, good.
And then, just gonna remind everybody that Jennifer Run appeal will be at the City Commission on October 20th. And our two major appeals, one of the Walmart, they're still discussing the record, and so a date has not yet been scheduled for Luba. But it is interesting to note that Walmart now owns the property, they purchased the property from Mr. Younger.
Younger.
Mr. Younger. So obviously, we'll be following that. The comp plan is a similar situation, there's a lot of arguments about what the record is between our attorneys and Mr. Jim Bean, and so that hasn't been scheduled for Luba yet.
How could there be dispute about what the record is?
Well, since the record's so big in both cases, you know, they, there are so many exhibits. Some exhibits, for example, one party wanted a PowerPoint presentation to be part of the record. So then there was an argument about, you know, how do we provide that, and is that really something Luba wants? And, I mean, there are so many little issues that they can argue about, you'd be amazed. I mean, I just got a brief today of 10 pages just talking about, you know, what we can provide and what we can't provide, and what Walmart wants and what they don't want, and...
A brief from Walmart or from Luba?
These are all between our attorney and Walmart's attorneys. So this, you know, what evidence we use in the Luba case, that, all that has to be settled before Luba will schedule a hearing. So there, there's a big discussion going on between our attorneys on that in both cases. So until that's settled, we won't have a date.
Okay, and the comp plan...
Same with the comp plan.
The comp plan appeal from Mr. Younger?
Mm-hmm. Same issue.
So are those two gonna get rolled together and be one?
I doubt it. I think there'll be two. They have different Luba case numbers, and there's a few between them, so they'll probably come up at different times unless they're dropped.
So for now, our new designations have been adopted?
Yes, and are in effect.
And so if Luba reverses, then we just reinstate the previous zoning?
Yeah, I think that, I don't think that's gonna happen. I think the worst thing that could happen is they could maybe find a procedural flaw and ask us to go through that whole discussion again, but I don't even think that's gonna happen.
I guess we'd like to point out that the recommend, recommendations that were made tonight will go to the City Commission on November 3rd. It's a Wednesday, 7:00 PM here at City Hall. It will be on that agenda.
Okay, we should have brought that out earlier before everybody left, but we didn't get that far. We'll try to bring it out at the next planning commission meeting as a reminder. Try and help me...
And that's it.
Okay, does anyone else have any comments, questions? Okay, well, all in favor of meeting adjourned? Aye. So moved.
What's scary is I agree with you guys.